The time is now 1:30 and it is Thursday, October the 2nd, 2014. And the regular meeting of the City Planning and Zoning Board will come to order. Today preliminary matters. Agenda additions or deletions? Tim, you have any?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Board members?
None.
Then we'll proceed. Approval of the minutes from last week's, last month's meeting of September 18th? Has everybody had a chance to look at those and review them? Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
That's good to me.
I'd like to have a motion to approve them, please.
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion. First, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, minutes are approved. The next thing we're going to open is for public comment. And if anybody has anything that in particular they'd like to talk about, please come forward now so we can talk about it. If you're here to talk about what's particularly on the agenda today, you have a choice to come ahead now or during that discussion point in time. Seeing nobody coming forward at this moment, I'm going to close the public hearing. The next item we have is a legislative piece of information, and it's an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending the Land Development Regulations, Part Two of the City of Vero Beach Code of Ordinance relating to the medical marijuana dispensaries, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date. And with everybody's permission, we would normally have Tim give us some opening comments on it because our chief of police today is running a very tight schedule. If the public has no problem with it and the other board members do not, I'd like to let our chief come forward and give him that courtesy so he can attend two functions and still perform for us today here when we need to know. Thank you, Chief. You can go right there to the microphone.
Either way, be fine.
Please let us know your name and information that we don't already know.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. My name is David Curry, chief of police here in Vero Beach.
Welcome.
Thank you. With regard to the proposed ordinance, we know that we're trying to prepare in case the amendment passes. But if I may start off by saying, I'm currently an active member of the Florida Police Chiefs Association, and I have as many, many members, as you can imagine, throughout the state of Florida, and our position as well, along with the Florida Sheriff's Association, is that we strongly oppose any type of proposals with regard to the sale or possession of marijuana. So I just want to preface my statements with that, and I understand why we are here. You all know and remember the pill mill that we had here on Miracle Mile, the North Cloverleaf 21st Street, that in July of 2012, in and around that June-July period, we shut that down, and that was a statewide project that unfortunately got out of hand here in the state of Florida. And we're happy to say today that there's, that's essentially no more, no longer a problem as far as pill mills go. We're still battling the pill issue on the street from time to time, but essentially that's gone. And we don't want something like that to rear its head again. And allowing dispensaries or pot shops, if you will, can certainly cause that here in the city. And what we try to do as law enforcement and to make sure everyone's safe here in the city limits and Indian River County, Vero Beach, is to not invite the criminal element into our city. And when things like those dispensaries happen, that's inviting the criminal element as far as a chance for burglary of the establishment, holding up robberies outside of the establishment, problems within, what have you. So loitering, things like that. And I know the, again, the ordinance addresses it, and it's pretty restrictive. I've dealt with Peggy and Tim, and as far as the ordinance go, we work with that, and I have no issues with that because, again, if you ask me, the more restrictive, the better. So I'm here to work with them and all of you in that regard. But we certainly oppose it as law enforcement. I understand the issue of cancer. My mother's 82, and she's a cancer survivor. My oldest sister's 61, and she's receiving chemo and radiation as we speak. And my mother-in-law was stricken with cancer this year, so I do understand the issue of cancer on a personal note. But I also understand the issue of drugs from law enforcement standpoint as well. I've been in the business almost 25 years now. I certainly will entertain any questions as we move forward.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. This hits, I'm a nurse, okay? And so this hits to the heart of my questioning this whole process because why isn't this being treated as a controlled substance that a doctor would prescribe, a pharmacist would fill, and then it would be administered by appropriate people? Why are we looking at a dispensary that it's almost like inviting a criminal element here even though we're looking to restrict the activity? Why is this happening?
Yes, ma'am. And Ms. Manous, that's a great point, and it's one of my points as well. We were just talking about it at the courthouse. We receive prescriptions when we're sick and from doctors, and we go to CVS or Walgreens or Perkins to fill that prescription. Why can't we receive a tablet, a pill, or a liquid form in regard to THC or whatever that element is that will help that individual in a serious case of cancer? Why can't we receive that from the medical doctor as a prescription and then go to CVS or Walgreens and fill it? Of course, the answer's the federal regulations right now because, as we all know, marijuana is still illegal and prohibited by federal law.
That's in a nutshell?
I believe so, yes, ma'am. But I think that they can create, chemists can create pills and tablets for just about anything. Why can't they create it for marijuana or medical marijuana with regard to serious cancer situations where people truly may need that? And then have it filled at a respectful, regulated facility such as, again, Walgreens or CVS, a place like that?
And then, you see, that comes further with my question because can someone bring it into a hospital for a very ill cancer patient or to hospice? Can they allow these drugs in if they're not being prescribed in that facility? You know, I'm very confused by this whole process.
Well, there's issues with, and Tim can allude to it, and even Peggy with the caregiver, where, you know, those kind of issues, what have you. There's too many holes in it as prescribed, if you will. So there's a lot of points, and you're making just a few of them.
Yeah, so you're bringing up the issues. I mean, the voter referendum, and I put a copy of the constitutional text amendment. There's, there could be statutes that are going to be written, the DOH got to me, there are a lot of holes in this thing. And the problem is, nobody knows if these holes are going to be filled. And part of what we're trying to do here is to pay some protection to the city and hopefully the state, you know, and there's going to be a lot of, as the chief pointed out, there can be a lot of input on anything that's done. And I can't see the legislature just allowing DOH go off to make it. I can see them doing statutes on this thing. So, and that's something that all the various organizations and cities and are going to be involved, I'm sure.
Yes, and this is really very early days because even if it passes on November 4th, then the Department of Health has six months to come up with regulations and statutes. So we're not even really sure what we're wrestling with right now. But from what we've seen and from what we've, the information we've gotten from the chief and Tim has been to several conferences, those who regulate early and strictly suffer the least. And we really want to make a statement to people out there potentially buying up property that we're going to regulate here in our town. And we wanted to walk a line with the people who actually legitimately need this product. We wanted to make it as safe as we could for those people to get what they needed legitimately under the Department of Health rules and regulations, but also show the bad guys out there that we mean business. And I think that was our underlying goal, and that was the way the council directed us.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just learned something, and I'd like to tell the other people as background, and maybe if you have time, Chief, give a comment. But that, what I learned was that medical marijuana is legal today, but it's just in a different form. It's in the liquid form. And so this referendum that we're all being asked to vote upon is just to provide the tobacco form and other forms and in a much higher dosage of the hallucinogenic compounds. The only reasonable explanation I've heard is that the current medical marijuana doesn't give you the munchies. In other words, if you're suffering, if you don't want to eat because of your illness, it's not going to help you. But the, this new form or the traditional forms obviously do.
Excuse me, Mr. Mutcher, are you talking about the Charlotte's Web, the low THC?
Yes.
Yes, that is.
I have the statutes right here.
We didn't put that.
It's 381.986, and it's called a low THC cannabis. And that is defined, it doesn't mean a whole lot to me as a non-chemist, but it contains 0.8% or less of, honey, I'd have to get you to say it because tetra cannabolol and more than 10% of cannaboldol weight for weight. And it's also, it was passed this legislative session, but it's not effective until January 1st, 2015. And it's also in the process right now of going through that same procedure I was telling you about where there have to be rules and regulations put into place by the Department of Health. And it was eerily like to me, the pill mill, Chief, because it talked about a compassionate use registry for physicians licensed under certain chapters. And I think you remember what the state went through to set up that registry for pill mills for a couple of years.
Monitoring system, right.
And we finally moved forward as a county and put our own regulations into place.
Right. Well, if you build it, they will come. And unfortunately, this one facility opened up with regard to the pill, and they certainly came from not only in Florida, all across the country, southeastern part of the United States, Kentucky, what have you, Georgia. And we had to battle that until the end. So, and that was several years in the making. And that's the fear in that regard as well. You know, it's the potential for expansion beyond the real use of or need of what we're talking about. And there's unscrupulous people out there, unfortunately, from doctors on down, and that's what we saw the last time. And you write a prescription without, someone goes into the office and says, I heard here, this is my issue, and the doctors say, here's your prescription without a full examination. We saw that all too much in the last series with the pill mills.
I think one of the major impetuses of acting now rather than waiting is the experience we had in the last few years of short-term rentals, where the state basically forbade any locality from putting in more restrictive ordinances than they already had on the books when the state passed their particular law, which meant we couldn't really tighten up on our short-term rental situation, which is now in court. If, we have two options as far as I can see. Put in a very restrictive thing now so we have something in our city that protects the citizens. And I don't think our option is to prohibit it totally. That'd be two options, most restrictive order, prohibit it totally. I think that what you said in your presentation was that you've looked at what our planning and zoning directors has drafted for our consideration, the city council's consideration, is probably as restrictive as we can possibly be. Or do you see other ways we could make it more restrictive?
Well, like you said, it's more or less a preemptive strike, and I think that's important. I think we all agree with that in preparation. But in looking at the proposed ordinance, it's pretty restrictive, and I have no issues with that as far as what's proposed.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
And the comments you made to us, you used the term pot shop and then you used dispensaries.
Yes.
The way they came across to me, when somebody said a pot shop, I thought that's the low end, that's the illegal, that's the shady, that's the, when somebody said a dispensary that I'm familiar with just from some people I know in the Colorado area, which is very, I mean, when you go into their storefronts, they look like any other store, they're professionally maintained and what have you.
Right.
And it has a totally different atmosphere than a pot shop when you say that. So, do you see any way there can be a dispensary that can be among other in our Miracle Mile and our Main Street? Can you see any way that can function there without legally and correctly as we'd like to see it in society? Most people here would like to see those people that have Parkinson's disease, I have a relative close who could use some of these medications that are not available to them now, in a way that's appropriate, like some alcohol is properly dispensed, and I can't find a lot of the things to be similar to it exactly, like most things we get at CVS or at Walgreens and et cetera. Do you see any way this can work if it's controlled and what kind of controls we have to have in to make it work like state liquor stores or whatever it might be? Is there, do you have any thoughts for us there?
Yes, and again, with dispensary is a nice way to put it, pot shops maybe the not-so-nice, but the reality. Again, that's for my lips. Having it in Miracle Mile, something like that, I think our restrictions obviously prohibit that, and we have to look at a number of things, you know, children, juveniles under the age of 18, things like that to and from. You have to also look at the issue of loitering, and we're prohibiting that as far as, you know, hanging out in front of the shop, hanging out in your car, those kind of things. And I don't think anyone wants that in downtown Miracle Mile, where people are parking there, taking parking up, sitting in their car, waiting, outside of their car, hanging out, what have you, things like that, and taking your children to and from, you know, the supermarket and passing. So I think with the ordinance, the restrictions more or less keep it in an area that's away from that location.
Doesn't that put it on the dark side, though, as opposed to putting it where it can be scrutinized more? There's, if you put it in an industrial park, that's the place, it's darker at night, it's, there's less traffic, there's less people seeing it, where if it's right out in the open, where it's right there, I don't think the people that are taking these, this drug illegally and doing, they're not going to come, are they going to come to that location, you think, to get it through illegal prescriptions and things? Or do you think they all go still where they go now, wherever it's happening? And it's not happening probably right now in Miracle Mile, but it is happening, some other places not far from the Miracle Mile where you can probably go get some of this stuff illegally right now. Are they going to convert to using this dispensary? Or is there any chance that it can be legit, straight up above the board, just like a state store is for alcohol or?
Well, that would be the ultimate goal, obviously. And as far as the dark side, if you will, there's certain hours, so after dark, it would be closed anyway. And, you know, the pill mills were, I'm sure, meant to be legitimate as well.
Right.
And they turned not so legitimate. So that's, again, the fear with that.
It's more complicated than.
It is. It really is.
It's a lot of aspects to look at.
It really is.
I think we're just beginning to touch the tip of it now.
Yeah. And regardless of where, regardless of where the location is, the concerns are the same, to be honest with you.
But I wouldn't want my children hanging out in a liquor store, but when we go into the grocery stores now, there's alcohol in most of them, and if not, it's right next door, and I take my child. It depends on the parenting, what they do, what they do with their children, how they monitor them.
Sure.
I mean, I take them by.
That's just like anything.
Yeah, so it's up to the individuals. So I'm not as concerned about that. But if they do, I think, if you're in the Miracle Mile, the stores that were there would complain immediately and make sure that the enforcement is very strongly upheld there as opposed to down some industrial park area. I'm wondering how much enforcement would happen there, as diligent about monitoring the enforcement there as they would be in a small shop in not just Miracle Mile, any place, any business area in town. That's kind of where I'm wondering.
Right.
You know, we put it in the industrial area, and their operating hours, everything this chief pointed out, but the industrial area, and looking at the studies done at the impacts of loitering and people around the store in the commercial areas at this point in time, we thought would be definitely a, not a positive.
Right.
And it's easier to do in the industrial, we put some controls on them, and as I think we get into this, I'll explain, I don't think you could have more than one or two of these located because of the separation requirements within even that area. So they're going to be really limited out of that, out of harm's way. But I would say that the police department's certainly going to know where the location is, so it's not like we're dealing with the pill mills where you could have had three, four, all over the place, okay? So it's a different kind of approach using zoning to come in here to deal with. These other issues, man, we're still at the, as I said, one of the biggest threats we have, if you read the, what I gave the city council, has to, what is the legislature and the DOH going to do? I mean, that's going to have a lot to do with how this is handled, and do they have the staffing to enforce it and all that? So there's a lot of concerns everybody has about this thing.
As Don stated, I think, and you've indicated us, we want to be ahead of the curve on this, and that's.
And that's right.
We're trying to get something on the books that's helped us in the future if we need it or not. But I don't think we've heard much from the city resident, I haven't, as what they want and where they want, and I think the election will tell us a lot after that, would probably be more capable of representing the people of the city after we've heard what they have to say about it.
Well, for one thing, we'll find out. This thing has to pass.
By 60%.
It needs 60% vote, based on what I saw in the past polls. It's close. And if it passes, this still has to go to the city council, has a first reading coming up, and I guess we have two hearings coming up, it would be on the final date of the.
Yes. Yeah, we're trying to have the second of two required public hearings on November 4th.
Yes.
So I think you saw the effective date in the ordinance, and that's how we tried to handle it.
And we wanted to get it done, so whatever dates they may put in on vesting or whatever, we don't know. But we feel this was, as Peggy pointed out very eloquently, this is, felt this is the way to go on this, and the council did.
Chief, you can't see any way that it could exist in a normal retail area, is that correct?
I think we should start where we're at with our proposal and see how things develop. You know, I'm thinking here as I'm standing as well, you know, again, take Miracle Mile, the volume of traffic, the volume of people, for whatever reason, all the shops and stores, the amount of calls we would potentially get, right, wrong, or indifferent, whether it's a legitimate call or not, compared to if, you know, an area that's not, that doesn't have as many people, you know, coming to and from, congregating, what have you. It essentially may be easier to monitor and to respond to and would potentially have less calls, potentially.
Is there any way we can ban it totally from our city but not giving it any zoning recognition of all?
Well, I think that was something that could be done. We believe we have the power to, but we don't think that's the appropriate approach at this time, right, Peggy? That the discussion was, the council wanted to be restrictive, we weren't asked to try to prohibit it. Certainly, I don't know, I think a couple of communities may have tried, are trying to do that, but I think we felt it was better to control, it would give us more, shall we, influence when it comes time to, when these regulations come down, banning it. Maybe you can add some more, Peggy?
Well, I think that council, like I was saying, wants to walk a line where there actually are people who have a legitimate need for this product.
Yeah.
And they wanted to make sure that it was safe for them, but also protective of our neighborhoods. And I was looking at, the Department of Justice wrote a couple of memos to the various state attorney generals, and Sam, or Sam, Tim referred to one of those, and I found two more, one in 2014 and one in 2013. And basically what he was saying was that they're relying on the strict state regulatory schemes, having them in place and having them strictly enforced, not just having them in place, but having them strictly enforced, so that some of the parade of horribles that the chief was talking about don't happen within our states. But they also put an emphasis on safe access. So it's a tough line.
A couple of things. I'm kind of against banning it entirely because if that were to be overturned, then it might be jenny bar the door, it might be wide open. But have we also looked at how this is working out and how it may have tried to be regulated in places like Colorado, Washington, California, Alaska?
A detailed study was done in California, I think, it was 78 pages, I have a copy of that, that they have medical. Thing is, it's a different way that they approached it, they have medical, and part of what our approach here, you know, so we don't know how that's going to play out in this state, but they had plenty of problems, and their sheriffs and deputies, they were all talking about the issues they had. And part of what we did in this ordinance, if you notice, the way the amendment reads or the text amendment would allow both cultivation, processing, all that, we got rid of that from the city just because that was another, I think that's where you get some more criminal activity opportunities in that, and we were trying to limit what we had to do on, you know, to help control it better. That doesn't mean it won't go out there, but it helps, you know, prevent more of the diversions. It mean, you know, we're doing what we can under the zoning, but that's the kind of problems they were, they're having co-ops, they were having cultivation in people's, you know, private homes and all sorts of things. So it's hard to look at that, but a lot of the issues did come out where they had armed robberies and that with a lot of cash involved, and those are certainly some of the things we were very concerned about here, much this, the loitering and the other kind of criminality would occur with, you know, people hanging around. That's why you see that we have strict prohibitions against, you know, I mean, the restriction of who can go into these facilities, you just can't go in shopping or something, you know, I like that, you know, that kind of thing. So you have to be eligible and a few other things, we can go through that, but.
Chief, do you think, if this passes, do you think it'll make, because you're opposed to it and your chief's association's opposed to it, do you think this will make the problem worse in Florida or better overall? Do you think it's, you think it's a negative to open this door?
Yes.
And so the more restrictive you believe, you believe that the chief's association and yourself believe, the more restrictive we are in this, the better our society will be?
Yes, especially as it's proposed currently, but yes.
What, does the chief's association have a suggestion to what those modifications should be where we can accommodate people in need and still restrict those that are doing it, that cause problems and deaths and everything else that happens, negative things in our society with this product when it's misused? Do you have a, what would be your suggested changes to the proposal?
Well, I think some of the things we're talking about, and again, moving forward if it's passed or not, but, you know, it's just, and even in the study with California, you know, again, you know, your housing marijuana creates, you know, burglaries take place, there's holdups outside of the parking lot, you know, again, the criminal element and comes into the city. So that's certainly what we're against. I don't think it's necessarily, once again, against someone that's ill getting what they need to make them better, if you will. And that's the problem, and the unscrupulous and the percentage of individuals take advantage of that, just like they did with the pill mill. You know, it was meant, I'm sure, to be right. But again, if you look at that, why aren't people going to the CVS and the Walgreens and instead of a storefront to get something filled? That is a question mark and an eyebrow raiser to me right off the top. That's when my light bulb goes on. Why am I going to a storefront to fulfill a prescription? And again, we have to remember, it's medical marijuana, it's not legalizing marijuana. I think some people are hoping for that, and that's the problem. That's the problem.
Mr. Chairman, Tim, we don't have agricultural uses in the city, do we?
No. But most of these, mostly, I don't mean to cut you off, but most of these, there's, this product, shall we call it that, is of such high value, there wouldn't be necessarily in a city, an urban area, they're going to be growing them inside hydroponically or that kind of thing. I mean, it's, you know, just because of the nature of it, and that was my understanding, they would be enclosed.
Is that allowed?
No, no, we're not allowing cultivation at all.
I'm not saying cultivation of marijuana, I'm saying cultivation of like any hydroponic crops or agricultural activity, whether it's inside or outside.
If it's inside, it'd be more of an industrial activity, and that's how we would classify it.
But it still would only be allowed in this industrial area?
Well, since we're not allowing it at all, if we were to do it, would be, you know, most likely in an industrial area, yeah. And then they would have more, they would have to have security and everything else.
I was just wondering if there's an angle there to strengthen our argument or if something would have to be inserted to that extent or that effect.
Well, we thought just ban, not prohibiting both those, excluding them from what we allow would do that, take the processing and the cultivation.
Well, we're creating something that is not referred to in the amendment. The amendment specifies.
That's correct.
Marijuana treatment centers. And we're saying, no, we will set up a marijuana dispensary for medical marijuana, not a treatment center.
Right, that's exactly what we do.
Exactly. Robin?
Yeah, I have a question. Peggy or Tim, do you know what neighboring cities are, how they're preparing? Are they doing similar?
I had the city, I had 10 localities in Florida ask me for a copy of the ordinance just today.
I'm thinking Fort Pierce.
Just before, oh, just after lunch, just before I came down here, City of Fort Pierce was asking me. Indian River County is drafting an ordinance right now, based the same way that we have on zoning. And I, on the previous question, I have a Supreme Court of California case that addresses some of these issues, and one of the things that they really drill on is that the individual city and counties have the power to control their own land use decisions, as long as it doesn't interfere with or be superseded by the state law. So because at this point there is no state law, we're in kind of a strange position, but should this pass on November 4th and the regulations go in place six months later, then we may have to take another look.
At our ordinance.
And the one thing I did point out. The one thing I did point out in your report, this does cover the low THC cannabis because we don't know exactly how those regulations, we may have to amend it because they would be under this, this rules and that. That isn't necessarily the intent, but we don't know where they're going necessarily on this until we have.
Those rules are currently being formulated.
That's exactly right, yes.
Mr. Chairman, can we let the chief go?
Yeah, I was going to say, people have additional questions of chief.
Get out of here.
Do you have any questions of us?
I don't think so.
Additional comments?
Yeah, I was just thinking as well, I know you mentioned about alcohol and right or wrong, it's legal obviously for 21 years and older. And then again, we're talking about medical marijuana, not trading your child across the parking lot to go to the store for marijuana, if you will. It's specifically for medical, so.
Just, you know, with that age of 18, would someone younger be allowed to be prescribed that the way they would a pain medication and other controlled substance?
I believe, the way it's written, yes, and that's what we don't want.
Yeah, that's what we don't want. So basically, the, if you're under 18 and been, I say, prescribed by a doctor, let's say, a doctor, they would have to have a caregiver come to get it.
But it could be prescribed for someone younger than 18?
Yes, it could.
That would be the same thing at Walgreens. Wouldn't that apply at Walgreens if you picked up a heroin substance there that was prescribed or some narcotic of some kind that you would have to be 18 to pick up that prescription?
Yeah, I think that.
I believe so.
One of the things we were trying to do, and Peggy brought up, I think, an example where, you know, kids in school could show, if we didn't limit that, you know, there's always a temptation, they would try to get access and you had a good.
My brother lives in Los Angeles and so he has really seen this. And this is a really horrible story, but it's what could happen. When it first started there for medical marijuana, there were a couple of different dispensaries or shops or whatever they call it out there in California. And it was $60 for the product and you had to have a prescription and, you know, the whole nine yards, no young children. Well, several years later, the reality is that now there's one on every corner. It's $20 for whatever the product is. Young kids as young as 12 are in there and they have an elderly doctor propped up in there writing out the prescriptions and passing them out. So it's pretty horrific, you know, the way it can happen if it's not properly controlled. And that's why we're really trying very hard to make it as strict as we can without limiting people who actually need the product. We definitely want to make sure the bad guys get a, you know, a good picture of what Indian River County and City of Vero Beach is all about.
If the federal government would give us the opportunity to run it through our normal pharmacies in a regular way, I think that Honey was kind of hit on the way that really could work most effectively is we could control like every other substance abuse we have and they could be applied appropriately. So until we get some relief from our federal people, I think we're going to have to deal with this kind of situations.
That's the kind of thing we're in with a lot of different issues that go on.
Yeah, true.
Even more complicated are the banks and the cash. And I only know what I've read, but the chief probably knows a lot more. But funneling that money through the bank system, the federal bank system has been a bit problematic as well. So I think that means there might be a lot of cash at these locations, making it even more problematic.
Yeah, well, again, with the pill mill, there was no, again, an eyebrow raiser. They don't accept insurance of any kind, no type of plan. It's all cash deals, you know, regulations and what have you. And then there's cash on hand, people know it. And one person tells another and the next thing you know, they're either being burglarized or someone's being robbed as they leave from closing up that night. So, and I know it can happen in a, you know, in a business area, what have you, but just an example, it's mostly all cash from what we understand.
Would we be able to require that the facilities in the city accept insurance, assuming that somebody's going to cover this, or that they can't be cash only? I think that was an issue of the pill mills, wasn't it? The cash only requirement?
Well, that may trigger some of the federal problems. I think until we see the rules and regulations that are put down by the state, well, until we see if it passes first, then see what rules and regulations are put down by the state. Because the state will be very careful to work within the Department of Justice guidelines that are laid out in these letters, which I can pass around, they're very interesting to read.
Well, we were, we're trying to get out in front of it. And if we wait, then it might be, might get in a situation where we're too late. It might be better to try and do something more restrictive and then, and then back off if we have to.
What do you think, chief? I mean, I would hate to run afoul of the federal banking rules or.
I don't know if we.
Insurance rules.
Yeah. I don't know if zoning, planning and zoning can deal with that effectively.
Yeah, I think we're, as far as this, I think we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, I think zoning rules are probably about the best we can do right now.
Yes.
I do have a question. The product has to be delivered to the dispensary. Can we regulate the hours that they are delivered so they're not, you know, coming at 3:00 in the morning and waiting for them to open, you know, sitting in the parking lot kind of thing? Can we regulate that?
I believe we probably could regulate that.
In an industrial area?
That's not a bad, because we, yeah, I mean, we do regulate, there are places in our ordinance we regulate and convenience stores on the beach, we regulate when they can have deliveries. We certainly could regulate this. We do have the business hours in there, so.
I think that's.
That's not a bad idea at all.
Plus, Tim also have the guard there when that delivery is being.
Yeah, we have it that the guard has to be there during business hours, but I think the guard, Peggy's exactly right, the guard should be there when they're making deliveries.
Additional questions to the chief?
Okay.
Seeing none, and I'll ask from the public, if you have a question of the chief, would you mind taking it? Would you like to ask if anybody, just come to the podium and stand beside him and just ask the question? If you would, please come forward now. I'd like to not leave you out of this conversation. Would you come to the podium, though? You have to do that, though. And please give us your name.
My name's Charmaine Brayton and I'm new here.
Okay.
My question is, when you, when you put strict regulations on something to, and you believe that there's going to be a higher criminal element with something there, if you made it more public, more common, more, it's kind of like talking to kids about sex. We don't want to do it, but it's something that we have to talk to them about because it's part of life. So is medical marijuana. Don't you think you're reducing the criminal element by making it more part of life? It's a plant. That's why it's not in the prescription is because it's a plant. More people die from peanuts than they do from marijuana. Nobody's died from marijuana. The criminal element, yeah, they get robbed because there is cash. Washington has changed that. The federal government is allowing banking because they want to reduce the criminal aspect of it. People don't sit around and loiter in the parking lots. I know. We have them all over Washington State. That's where I've moved from. I'm the advocate. I'm just kidding. So that's my question. Don't you think that more public information, more, people are letting their kids die in the car. Those people aren't going to care. The people who do care about their kids are going to talk to them about drugs, sex, alcohol. Don't you think that that will help reduce the criminal element in itself?
Well, I think it's important and we would intend on doing that anyway. If you go to our Facebook page and Twitter page now, we've had for a year or more, you know, we will certainly educate the public on its location and on the ordinance, if there is one, and everything we can do to make sure they understand where and what it's all about. And it's not just the plant, it's the chemical that's in the plant. It's not the leafy substance as much as the THC level in it that that's what they're after, if you will. So education is important, you're right. And we would certainly do that, just like we try to with the other things we do here in the city.
Any additional questions? Then, chief, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Good to see everybody. Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Thanks, chief.
With now, we'd like to go back, I believe, to Tim and make your formal presentation on this particular piece of legislation.
It's like we've gone through a lot of Tim's presentations.
Well, we may have to repeat it. And those of you who would like, after Tim's presentation, then we'll have members of the public here that would like to speak, come up and have, say what you'd like to say.
All right. As I pointed out earlier, we all, we discussed that the city council directed us to prepare this ordinance in response to pending legislation if the voters pass the Amendment 2 to Article 1029 of the Constitution. Basically, the ordinance that's been proposed here, we worked with the city attorney on it. The ordinance itself wouldn't go into effect unless the, with needs both the adoption by the city council and the passage of the amendment to even go into effect. So we have that proviso in there. And I can tell you, we did look at other ordinances that have been prepared in the state. I even looked at the Boulder, Colorado ordinance. I know it's not, they have recreational marijuana. I took a look at that and doing that. We put a copy of the constitutional amendment in your package. We've already gone over a couple of the issues about what the amendment would do. Again, the amendment would allow for the use of marijuana of individuals with debilitating condition as defined in the amendment. And I think that's probably one of the critical things. If you look at what the definition of debilitating a medical condition is, it's basically, it has numerous diseases there, very, you know, painful diseases, but it also allows a physician believes that the medical marijuana use of it would likely outweigh the potential health risks. So people are very concerned. That could be everything from chronic headaches to back pain and all that that could be misused. I point out what some of the concerns and potential impacts are, and this is just looking at the amendment language. And again, understand that it probably is going to, the legislature probably get involved. DOH is definitely going to have to do regulations, as Peggy pointed out, within six months after its passage. There are no limits on the number of these marijuana treatment facilities. And as Mr. Crotto pointed out, the definition of these are wide ranging, everything from cultivation to processing, to transfer, to sale, to all that. And it's a very wide definition. There are no location requirements that prohibit these centers from what we call sensitive land uses, schools, public parks, child daycare centers, residential neighborhoods. Nothing prevents or restricts children or the general public from frequenting the centers. And the definition, as I point out, the definition debilitating medical condition is so broad is what the, that's the real concern a lot of people have. And that leads to misuse, obviously. And there's going to be money to be had. So wherever there's money to be had, it's easy for people to slip. In addition to above concerns, these centers may be targets for increased criminal activity. And then we just had a long discussion of that because of the valuable inventory and large amounts of cash. The marijuana may be diverted for unintended purposes and that creates further drug-related issues. They may have a potential for creating a blighting influence if not properly regulated. And it may increase traffic and noise and loitering in the immediate vicinity. So again, we point out the city council's direction on it. We just went through a good discussion of why we want to do that and why we didn't just want to prohibit it. I think Peggy pretty well hit that. So in response to that, the staff, again, as I explained to you, we took a look at a lot of other ordinances and some of the legal background on it and tried to come up with a strict ordinance that would allow that, but would allow it for people who really need it as a legal medicinal use. Some of the summary of that is we don't allow these dispensing of the medical marijuana at medical marijuana dispensaries, which we define in our ordinance. And I said that does exclude cultivation and processing. Only within the M, which is our industrial district, as a conditional use, and also requiring separation of dispensaries from schools, child daycare, public parks, residential zoning districts and other medical dispensaries. And I'm going to show you, we've got a map that shows you approximately where the area. That gives you a good location. You could see it's mostly centered along the rail track. It's our southern part of the city where it's all mostly industrial through there. Also, we have site design standards to address security and other concerns with limits on the size of dispensaries, the business hours, and we just brought up a new one. I think the delivery is something we should add into that. The sale of products to only medical marijuana related supplies or educational materials. Prohibiting the onsite consumption of the marijuana and alcoholic beverages, won't allow that on the site. And limiting the access to qualified patients over 18, personal caregivers, employees of the business and other qualified individuals, including authorized city and state officials or county if it's the DOH, which they're part of the state. As I point out before, this ordinance does apply to the low THC medical marijuana, which is now undergoing rulemaking. And we'll probably have to, we didn't know, we want to just leave it in there. It does cover it, but we would probably modify this ordinance once we have a better idea of what those regulations are going to be. I went through the staff review analysis. I won't bore you with that. That shows you it meets our code. Clearly, this is a public interest to be served and public safety concerns and all that. And what we find putting, it is consistent with our other land development regulations. Our industrial zone is where we put a lot of uses that have external impacts. Clearly, it fits that type of classification. So our recommendation is, as we said, to recommend move forward to the city council, but we would like to have whatever other recommendations you would like to add to that. As I said, we've already, you've already come up with a couple that I think would be very appropriate. So unless you have, you want to ask some specific questions of me?
We have specific questions of Tim.
Oh, and the other thing I want to point, I gave you two pieces of paper that had, I had mistakes. I forgot to include one. The other one, I think, is already in there. So just ignore it. I got carried away with 18 revisions of this and I had, got the wrong one done.
I do have a thought here. It goes back to some personal experience when I was receiving cancer treatment years ago. I would have to walk through the front door and there was a smoking area to the side of it. And boy, I hated that. I just hated the smell of smoke. And so I happened to mention it to the doctor that was treating me and he said, what? It had never occurred to anybody that no one should be smoking at the cancer treatment center. It coincided with our, you know, Clean Air Act here in Florida, truly. And so I'm wondering, can we put down that there, we'll regulate there's no smoking on site there?
Well, we don't allow the consumption of tobacco on site.
Isn't that it?
Yeah.
It's in there.
Yeah, it's in there. I'm sorry. No, no, I wouldn't.
Okay.
I would suggest, I mean, one thing I would throw in on the delivery hours, because I want to get this in, I would suggest that we only allow them to operate between 8:00 AM and then I would say like 6:00 AM in the morning.
Can I ask a couple of questions about that delivery thing? I have questions about that. If we put that in there.
Yes.
Are we isolating everybody else in the industrial area under that same zoning to work with the same rules? We can't make special rules for this particular.
Certainly we can.
You can?
Yes.
Peggy, so.
Sure, it's a conditional, it's a conditional use.
Because it's a conditional use.
Yes.
Okay, that's the only way. Otherwise.
Well, you can, yeah, you can put some requirements as a special exception or something. We don't have that in our, but we don't here, but it is, as Peggy pointed out, what I should have pointed out as your planning director, it is a conditional use center here. So we are allowed to put easily.
I read that, but I didn't know that.
As well as.
Everybody had to apply by the same.
No, 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 because we have that anyway. If you look in our industrial, we have different uses that have different requirements and they're permitted as a right. They just have to meet the requirements to be in that district. So that, there's no problem with that.
And the justification for this being a conditional use is that it's a controlled substance?
Well, it has, it has impacts that we're not totally, you know.
It's a new bird.
That we need to look at. And it may be, depending on what comes in, it gives that additional opportunity to look at that. But it would still have the same, we have criteria in there they have to look at. If they meet that criteria, then, you know, you have to find criteria, substantial competent evidence that would say no, that they don't meet that, to say no to it.
Is there any sense of reasonability? It has to be reasonable and can you say anything is off the wall?
When you put condition, you can put condition on it, they have to be reasonable conditions.
Okay, so they may challenge that in some cases.
Yes, but I think we have a lot of requirements in here that, you know, it's just an added level of security for people to put in the conditional use. And being such a, you know, a novel use for us, that's one of the things, the chief pointed that out. We've had liquor stores for goodness knows how long, but we haven't had marijuana stores, whether for medical use or whatever, you know, so. whether for medical use or whatever, you know, so.
Would it be appropriate to open this up in the public? I think I'd like to have people that have been sitting back and not coming forward. If there's people in right now that are here would like to speak, please come to the podium. And you don't have to be sworn in, you just give us your name and what have you, and let's hear what you have to say. We're here to listen to y'all, so. If you'd like, come forward, please. Feel free to. Give us your name again, please.
Charmaine.
Charmaine, okay.
So...
Do you live in the city, Charmaine? What is your...
I live in Indian River County.
Live in Indian River County, okay.
Yeah. But I work in Vero Beach.
Okay.
I'm not sure about this map, because I'm still learning my way around. Is this like in the middle of nowhere?
Yeah.
So, you're going to send the 65-year-old cancer patient to the middle of nowhere, where the risk of criminal activity is increased, to get their medication?
Well, I don't think it's the middle of nowhere.
No, it's not the middle of nowhere.
If you're talking about it as a dispensary, and some of you had said, "Why can't I get it at the pharmacy?", when you're saying that, it makes it sound like I should be able to get it at the pharmacy. Eventually, they will be able to. However, there's a pharmacy on every corner. There's a liquor store on every corner. There are more bars here than I can count, all over the place. Anybody can go there. These children pass by these places all the time, and you're going to pick the middle of nowhere to put a dispensary. I just think that's odd, considering the clientele that you're going to have. These people have medical conditions. They may not be fully capable of driving out there or wanting, feeling safe enough to go out there. Again, you're putting, you're taking it, I'm not saying you are, I know I'm phrasing this wrong, but you're taking, you're maintaining the criminal element by putting it so far away. That's what it seems like to me. Where I live, we have them all over the place, and there is no increase in criminal activity. The people that go in there range anywhere from the dude that looks stoned to the grandma who's got, you know, grandkids, and there's just, I just, I'm not seeing it. And I know part of it's fear of the unknown, but I think looking forward, this is going to be legalized. It will eventually be legalized. Marijuana will eventually be legalized, and they're starting out with baby steps. But when you start putting these restrictions on now, that's going to impede the ability for it to expand, because it's going to happen. It's just a matter of when. And I don't know if that's, if that is in the best interest of the public by keeping it hidden away in a faraway place or making it difficult for people to get. So, I'm just putting, well, I mean, in Colorado, they had a 20% decrease in deaths from prescription medications for pain once medical marijuana was legalized. It's true.
I have questions.
And, go ahead.
No. We were waiting for you. We didn't mean to...
No, it's okay.
Book a question.
I wanted to make, yeah, I wanted to make an observation, if it's not a question, but you kind, you said you were unfamiliar with the area, and you were worried about the elderly people going in the middle of nowhere. I think we could probably point out on the map that this is right across the street from the Bridge Club.
Okay, well, that's good.
Somehow, somehow, they managed to get there safely and regularly.
That's an adult daycare center.
You can't say that.
I would not.
I didn't.
Yeah, I know you didn't. That's why I wanted to correct you.
Yeah, he said it, I didn't.
I'm still learning. I really am.
Charmaine, I think there's a consensus, and I don't know this, because not many people have spoke to me about this. I had to ask some people about it, and I don't think it's on everybody's mind yet. I think it's still kind of in the background. But I think generally in the city, we would like to have controls, and I think we'd rather over-control in the beginning, and because you said it can grow, and I think we'd like to have the controls in place so that it doesn't get out of the control of the people of the city, as opposed to having it the other way, let it wide open, then try to control it once it's opened up. So, I think that you're going to find the sentiment, and this is just my thoughts, not reality, you're going to find the sentiments of our community. You're going to control it as tightly as possible in the beginning. If it works efficiently and effectively, and the people adjust to it or want to change it, they will do that, but it's harder to put the genie back in the bottle than otherwise. And I think that's the way, I think, I just, my guess, my belief is that our community will proceed, and I'm not sure of that, because I think that you have some merit to what you're saying. Sometimes I see it as if you put it where it's visible and highly, you can control it easier and better, but on the other hand, that may be a mistake. I don't know enough yet to make a good decision.
That's what they said about alcohol.
Well, that's what we're talking about today. We're trying to get input from people. There's not, I expected more people here today to...
So did I.
To give the input on what we should do and say and think than I have gotten so far. So, I think city council may hear a lot more than the planning and zoning board will hear when it gets to their level.
Maybe not. You mentioned you had some experience where you lived before you moved here.
Yeah, I'm from Seattle.
Where are you from?
Seattle.
Seattle?
Seattle.
Oh, Seattle. I'm sorry.
Seattle, Washington.
Okay, and they've just started that a couple of years ago.
We just, they just legalized recreational marijuana in June, but I think it's three or four years that we've had medical marijuana all over the city and in different towns. The biggest issue that I have seen, because I have a friend of mine who does run a dispensary, and I think pot shops is like saying you're a stoner, you know, it's just, it's just a generic term. It can be a bit demeaning, but until we come up with a better name for it, you know, like the canister or something, I don't know, I'll get creative. He was robbed, not for his pot, for his money.
Right. Yeah, money is, money talks.
It's, and part of the reason that the price has gone down so much in California is because it's not illegal. I mean, when you take away, when it's not illegal, it's, you don't have so much criminal element to it. I am so amazed at how many people I have met in Florida, I've been here six months, who get stoned. And we're talking, you know, from young people to old people. The range is this big. The 60s is still alive, I'm just saying. These people aren't criminals. These people aren't drug dealers or nothing, but they are on edge because, you know, that 62-year-old person could go to jail feasibly for having pot in their car, while you've got people walking down the streets stabbing people at McDonald's. There's, I have met so many law enforcement agencies who do advocate for legalized marijuana. I love Florida. I've been able to wear shorts and sandals every day. I dig it here, but they're a little bit behind. You guys just got your first Trader Joe's not long ago, so. I think if you really look at how Colorado started out and how Washington started out with their little shops, there was no increase. We did have an increase, granted, when the recreational marijuana passed, there were lines.
Duh.
You know, but there are no more lines. It's like having the new Krispy Kreme. How long is the line there? And that's worse for you than pot. I'm just saying. So, I'm just throwing, and that's why I especially came to this meeting, because I heard about it on the news, that I wanted to be here to share that information with you, so that when you look at all the things, really look at what Colorado and Washington have done. They've been successful. Colorado had, in one month, made like $10 million in taxes. That's more than they've made on other taxes in the state. There's a lot of money. Yes, there's money, and people will take advantage of it. So did the real estate agents here, taking people's homes and flipping them. I see it. I've personally seen it. You're always going to have that element, but to keep an open mind, know that this, that, it's hard to abuse it, I'm just telling you. You only get so stoned, and then you're just, you don't, you don't drive, you don't, you just watch TV, eat. But, so, just to keep an open mind, really look at what Colorado and Washington have done, because it has been successful. And you're right, the money part, it is a huge issue, and that's why the federal government has relaxed it, so now these pot shops and the dispensaries can deposit their money. That was their biggest fear. It wasn't the pot. It was getting robbed, because they did, I don't want to, that's what makes it seem more criminal, is, oh, I can only do it with cash, you know, I can't, because they can't deposit it, so they only take cash. So, anyway, putting it out there, and don't limit it too much for, you know, for kids. I don't want kids to go in and buy it, but you have five, six, seven-year-old kids who have epilepsy, who have ADHD, who have other maladies, that this has been scientifically proven to help. The pharmaceutical companies make their money off of dispensing drugs and killing people with them. Marijuana doesn't work that way. It's an alternative medicine, and that is why it's not a prescription. Doctors can't, right now, can't write a prescription for it. They can only write a recommendation. So, that's, you only get a recommendation, you don't get an actual script. But don't, you know, to, just think about it, and, you know, look at, look at what the other states have done, because it's, it's coming. I know you guys are a little behind. You'll catch up, but to think about the future, not just, just what's up now, so, but vote.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of comments on that.
Comments?
I think your friend probably got robbed because it was a cash business. Nobody breaks in and steals credit card receipts.
He was held at gunpoint.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And they didn't take his pot.
And it does, that was my point earlier. I don't think this needs to be a cash business, and I think they, and you mentioned taxes. I'm kind of mixing these two points up, but you mentioned taxes. Recreational marijuana, I'm sure, will be taxed, but medicinal marijuana, pretty much a 99% chance won't, because, you know, pharmaceuticals aren't taxed in Florida anyway. And so, there won't, there won't be that kind of a boom from the, from the taxes, but I am concerned about any kind of a cash business. Not only that the proprietor might get stuck up, but, you know, it, going back to taxes, people offer me cash in my business all the time, because they think I'll put it in my pocket and, and don't need to report it or pay taxes on it or anything else, and I'm telling you that I don't do that. But, you know, it's a problem, a purely cash business. And I think we did see it in the pill mill situation. They were only taking cash. I don't know whether there were robberies as a result, but it just kind of indicates that there's some illegitimate aspect to it.
Well, there are, I know that Washington and Colorado have strict guidelines in place for the medical marijuana that they do have to follow. They have to, all their, when you buy, you know, a bud or whatever, depending on what you need, and that's another thing, there are so many different strains. They can talk to you and tell you what's going to work best for you. Some have, some do increase the munchies. Well, when you have someone who's not eating, you want them to have the munchies. When you have someone in pain, but they don't need that, that's the reduced THC. Where was I going with this? I forgot.
That happens to me, too.
I do it all the time. It's so bad.
I would like to have...
The taxes.
I have a comment for you. When you first came up here the first time, you made a comment that nobody's ever died from marijuana. I want to question that one. They may not have died from the marijuana, I don't know the statistic of it, but I know people using marijuana improperly, people have died from their actions. And I wanted to make sure, and that's like alcohol in a way. Properly used, under certain circumstances, that's everybody's private business, okay? If you want to get drunk and stay in your house and drink yourself to your death, I really don't care. But when you come out into the street with that same alcohol and hurt somebody else, then I do care. And the problem is, I think that marijuana can have some of the negative impacts that alcohol does, where we take it out of our personal use and our personal consumption and our personal environment, take it into a public arena where you can hurt other people. And I think that is a major fear I have of what this can do to our community.
It's true. I mean, I mean, there's always that potential in Washington State.
I don't think it's more than a potential, I think it's a reality, and that's what I believe.
It's no different than the concerts that you have here. Do you know how many people come out of the rock concert stoned? My point is...
They're not legal, right? I mean, I agree, that's true, but...
Responsible marijuana users don't do that, just like responsible drinkers don't do that. Marijuana and alcohol don't necessarily mix well, so it's not often that you get someone who's stoned and drunk at the same time. They just don't blend well. In Washington State, when you get pulled over, if the law enforcement officer thinks that you, suspects that you are stoned, you have to do a blood draw. Simple as that. You still, they're going to do the same DUI tests? It's, and I think it's, oh, it's a, it's a certain amount of THC that you can have in your system, because that they consider you as stoned and incapable of driving properly. But from my personal experience of the people that I know, they don't want to drive. They don't want to drive anywhere. It's, you do it at home. It's something you do at home. People don't stand out front of the pot shops in Washington State and smoke pot. The only time they smoke pot in public, it's illegal. You can't smoke it in public. The only time they smoke it in public is during Hemp Fest, and then it's a giant contact high.
Any additional questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for listening.
Tim, back to you. Additional questions of Tim?
Any other public?
Any other public like to, forgive me. Please come forward, sure. Please state your name and where your address, please, for the record.
Hi, I'm Christine Kissler. I live in Vero Beach. I appreciate this open forum today. Is that map available to the public?
Yes.
Okay, good. I think what, for me, has been left out a little bit of the discussion is the person who may or may not be, you know, may be operating a dispensary, would have to be a responsible person, just like a bar owner would have to be a responsible person. I think that's, that's a big thing. I think a lot of the questions that have come up today, you have to wait and see if this passes, and I'm curious when the next meeting is of the zoning board? Two weeks?
It's usually two weeks.
Well, this, this ordinance is going on to the city council for first reading, so today is...
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, that'd be a first reading, then there are going to be two hearings after that.
Next Tuesday. Because, see, for me, I read about this in yesterday's Press Journal, and I wouldn't have known about this unless I'd been paying attention, and maybe that's why there's not more people here. So, you know, that's, I think people are concerned. Is, is this area on the goal line or a bus route, or?
I believe that the southern part is on the, yes, it is. Part of it is on the goal line.
Okay, and my last question is, when you talk about delivering the product to a dispensary, could you explain that to me? Where is it being delivered from?
Where it's been processed, I mean, right now, it wouldn't be from inside the city. It would be from somewhere else. Distribution center of some sort. I mean, these are, these are questions that are nice questions, but a lot of that's going to determine what these regulations from the state are doing.
Yeah, I assume that the state will probably weigh in on that, because in the compassionate use of low THC that we talked about a little bit earlier that's already passed, they actually limit the establishment of five dispensing organizations to ensure reasonable statewide accessibility. So, they go so far as to say there's one to be in the northwest Florida, northeast Florida, central Florida, southeast Florida, and southwest Florida. So, I don't know if they'll do the same thing with, with this provision if it passes by the vote of the people on November 4th, so we'll just have to wait and see.
Okay, but you're not entertaining having everything, when I read the amendment, there was a part of it that sounded like it was one entity to, 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 you know, grow, cultivate, process, and dispense.
Right, we're disallowing, we're only allowing the dispensing.
That's off the table for Vero Beach.
With inside Vero Beach, you're correct.
With inside Vero Beach.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. So, I'm a former bar owner. I was a bar owner in New York State for 20-plus years. I built out an empty store, got a used variance, went through all of these motions, and so I have a curiosity about how you're going to handle it. And where I live is near the train tracks, near Oslo Road, so I've got all aboard Florida on my mind. I've got this on my mind.
We all do it.
There's a lot going on right now.
Not all aboard Florida, right?
The good news is that the train is not stopping here to do a delivery.
It won't be delivered by a train. We hope it doesn't come by train any other time. They won't stop here, either. People outside.
Better watch out. Better, better watch out. All right. So thank you again. I'm sure you'll be seeing me again, and, um, next two weeks from today?
It's next Tuesday before the city council.
City council, next stop.
City council hears it on first reading next Tuesday, starting at 9:30 in the morning.
Okay. So you folks are basically going to be controlling the zoning and the, where, where a location could be.
It's a conditional use, if, that's the way they keep it.
That's the way they go.
If they keep it conditional.
But really, all this is contingent on Florida residents passing the amendment.
Yes.
That's correct. And then if we, any organization, individual wants to open a dispensary here in Vero Beach, they have to apply to this board and satisfy a lot of conditions that are listed in the, in the ordinance. You should have a copy. Tim, do you have a copy?
I'm going to give her, that has the map in it.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay. And Tim, who are you?
I'm, I'm trying to hide my identity. I'm, I'm the planning director.
You're the planning director?
Yes.
Okay. Good to know. And, um, thank you.
That's all, that's all on the internet, too.
Let me just add this, you get the Press Journal, two weeks before our meetings, something like this is always posted, which is, announces what's coming up.
Okay.
And this very clearly said that it was the marijuana consideration today.
Okay.
So if you see something like this, look at it and say, oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
There's also a city of Vero Beach website that posts all of our different meetings, so you can take a look at that, too, and get copies of anything that you want.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you again. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A question, Tim, I'd like, are we ready to kind of?
Any more public?
Go ahead, go ahead. I don't mean, I wasn't calling for a question.
Are we done with the public input part?
Yeah. More public input. Anybody else would like to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close public input.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Our school board liaison is here, and I'm curious as to whether the school board, he has anything to say, or if the school board has discussed this issue and would like to share anything with us?
Looks like a no.
Okay. How'd I know that?
One, Tim, one of the questions I had, if I can ask, and maybe we can get, if we don't allow them to process, cultivate, here in the city, if the legal statewide referendum contains that in, are we outlawing it totally from our city, then? Then there's no way you could comply with our zoning ordinance to have it here in the city? Would that be correct? If those three must be consistent with the one ownership?
We'll need to take a look at what the state does. Because they could, they could try to preempt us. They could preempt us. So we're hoping that with these regulations in place early-
We have something.
As Don was saying, we have something, and depending on the language that they come up with, we might have some grandfathering status, we might not. They might just have a statement that says, we preempt every local ordinance, every municipal ordinance, and we'd be out of business.
But that won't be known-
And then it would default to the state.
That won't be known even after the referendum. It'll take a period of time for us to go through the process-
Probably not.
Setting up the rules and regulations to underline the, okay.
Somehow, I don't think Vero Beach will be the first place dispensaries will try to be established.
I don't think so.
I would disagree, I would agree with that.
What I, what I found interesting was that in the constitutional amendment, they're referring to Medical Marijuana Treatment Center. And that's all encompassing for-
That's correct.
Yeah. And, and are we giving our own definition of a dispensary? And is that going to be acceptable versus treatment? But we don't know that yet, do we?
Well, we don't know if they're going to preempt us or not, or partially preempt us, or what they're going to do. But several other locales are following that same, they're calling them dispensaries.
I think you're following the lead that some cities in California have tried, right? To break it down.
Yes.
And I think what we're, I think that we're trying to walk a, a tightrope between not saying, we don't want any of them in our town at all. But to say, this part of it, we think we can have in our town.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, right.
And so it's not being a total rejection, so it gives us a much stronger argument that we're trying a reasonable way of, of matching our, our community's needs against what-
Yeah, and I, and I think we, as Peggy pointed out earlier, I mean, if this does pass, our people, this would be a way to, for their pain and suffering, and we want to make sure that it's done in a safe manner, that they can have access to it, and done legally. All right?
And Indian River County is also in the process of drafting an ordinance based under their own zoning rules and regulations.
Yeah, I have a-
So we'll see how that goes.
A question along those lines. Do we have any kind of compatibility agreements with the county for abutting property, so that county property that abuts the city property, we try to maintain our zoning in compatibility, so that we don't have, you know, big changes on-
Right. Well, I looked at the uses in the county when I did this, on separation, but we do, when we have anything that's occurring next, near the boundaries, we send those, they, we, we-
We have an opportunity to comment. We have an opportunity to comment. If the county's thinking-
And we get it all the time, and, for instance, Victorious Station-
Right.
Or Village, or whatever came on, we sent a hold-
Oh, yeah.
That to Stan Bowling and his group. So we do routinely do that.
So if the county's going to allow this, and districts that are abutting our district, we, we could have the ability to comment on it.
And I did send a copy of our ordinance to Mr. Bowling.
And I sent a copy to Mr. Rheingold as well. Yeah, we work very closely with the county attorney and with the county planning department on all of these sorts of matters. And we certainly did with the pill mills, and that was very successful.
Yeah.
So, any suggestion that they're going in the same direction we're going?
I don't know. They're, they're starting a little bit later than we are, so they're still formulating.
And they got a large area with a lot of agricultural, so they're in a different boat than we're in, so.
I have a question about the boundary. Okay? Everything inside that red line?
Yeah. Well, that's potential. I didn't go into looking, all I said, I took our GIS out-
Got it.
And measured the various uses, and that's approximate. It isn't-
And this is the only place in the city?
This would be the only place in the city. We have some other industrial, okay? However, some, it's city property at the, at the airport. Well, for one thing, FAA would have to prove that, you know that ain't going to happen. The other one-
Federal.
The other one is our electric, you know, facility, that which is industrial, but, and then is the water and sewer. And then the other is the mobile home or manufactured housing, south of the water and sewer. It is actually zoned industrial, but it has an overlay of mobile home park.
Right.
So that would preclude any industrial use in there, anyway. Because I don't know why they never went back to do anything about it. It was some issue they had with mobile homes. But anyway, so the only place in the city that meets that, because there is industrial north of that, was all within city parks, within that 1,000.
Okay. Because what I'm looking at, I, I kind of know a little bit of this area. There's a lot of residential on that north side. And there's a very large church that borders.
It doesn't, church is not a sensitive view.
I know it's not. I don't see it here.
And, and residential's in a mixed use. All that's non-residential. I did it by zoning.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I know we've got, in, um, two, on page 47, it says not to be located within 1,000 feet of any school, childcare facility, and so forth. I would like, personally, my experience with, with not medical marijuana, but I was a high school teacher for a number of years, and had quite a bit of dealings with people who were using marijuana throughout the day, and-
Other teachers?
Well, that too. So, but anyway, my experience is different from your experience, and I happen to know the activities in that church. There are, there's quite a bit of activity daily in that church. And, not that a marijuana dispensary, yeah, is going to cause a problem, but I really think that churches need to be included. And that, I'm sorry, that's why-
Yeah, I, I didn't do that. If they have a day, active daycare center, I would include them, if that's the-
That would help, that's going to help a lot there, because most of them do have some kind of a daycare-
A church could have. And I'd have to look at that to see what happens.
I would like you to look at it.
I mean, I had a comment, somebody said, well, I think it should be 2,000 feet from a school. Well, you do that, then you don't have, you might as well ban them. Okay? So, that puts another wrinkle into the thing. I mean, we could take, I could take a look at that. So the church you're talking about is the Calvary? Yeah, I thought that's the one.
Very, very active children's programs.
Yeah, united.
Yeah.
But if we put, if we restrict, I think we're in, the court, people may take us to court and win if we make, if we're too restrictive, then we-
I know, but it's the same, that NIMBY thing, you know? It's like, that's not your church, so it's not a problem. But if it is your church, it might be a problem. You know, it's just, I think it's something we need to put out.
It makes, if they had a, most, if they had a, a approved daycare, which churches have to if they have daycare, then that's one thing. I'd take a look at it, but I just having, I mean, you could have, it could be any kind of use where they're having, you know, children, and we wouldn't pick it. I mean, there comes a point where you have to draw that line. That's all I'm saying.
That's why I was just wondering where the line came.
Question, question. If, if we had a, an application for a site, any, any church within 1,000 feet could come in and say, we have a daycare facility, therefore?
Well, I mean, it is a conditional use.
Yeah.
And if, if they could show that it would have some negative impact, yes, that's, that's one reason we have it, very good.
I, I also think that it would be difficult in this city to find any site that is more than 1,000 feet from any church.
Yeah, I know.
There's so many churches in this town, all over the place. Little one, you know, one-room schoolhouse churches, there's a lot of them all over the place. So I don't know how we would be, if we put that kind of restriction in.
And they show up in shopping centers, and all that.
You never know where they're going to show up. And they can rent, they can go in and rent space at any, any given times.
And I think, and, and remember, a lot of their, a lot of these properties are got, are already got valid, ongoing uses, have been there for a while. So it isn't like the railroad owns a lot, they're, you know, that's not going to happen there. So it is not a lot of property that's actually would probably be available. I say that without getting in detail.
I've got a question. How's this going to work, then? If you say this is, you know, area eligible, isn't the ordinance going, the final ordinance going to have to have some geographic description? Or is it, uh-
No, I just did-
Come back to us as a conditional use with an industrial?
Well, we don't want to put it in the ordinance, because then we, we've got to, we're approving it by ordinance, and you can't amend it. This is done, just rough thing, I, you know, we didn't set an overlay district here. This is just following the guidelines, you know, of the separation. Okay? So it's not an overlay district.
We made it a conditional use, and these are the restrictions within that conditional use.
That's right.
So this map is not part of the ordinance?
No, no. It's just informational items, so you understand where-
But it confines the conditional use.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other, any other industrial zone in the city would not have enough area to allow for one of these things to take, is that what you're saying?
Well, they're, all the ones I was talking about are either were precluded for the reasons I said.
For the reasons that are listed, right.
That's right.
So this is the only one in the whole city where-
This is the only one, the area in the city where it could fit in. And I think, we do the same with alcoholic beverages. Remember, we have guidelines that were, you know, that you have from schools. So this is not unusual that we use these kind of separation lines.
More questions, more discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions. Number one, we've talked about the delivery of the product to the dispensary, but I think we also need to consider the exit of that product. Either, either waste, for some reason, the product is no longer effective, the disposal of that product. I think there's as much of an issue with it coming in, there should also be an exit, an issue with it exiting. I'm not talking about the retail of it. I'm talking about the removal of a bad product, if you will.
Is it processed, I wonder if it's processed before it gets there? And I don't know that. See, I'm naive about it. We're not processing it on our site, so therefore it's a finished product that come to our site. And the fact that they'd be throwing marijuana out the door in the trash, I don't know that that would be a factor, so.
In response, there is an expiration date on every medication.
Okay.
And, uh, the health department has controls on-
How you dispose it.
How that expired drug is disposed of. And I think that should be considered as-
That's probably a health department, you know, implementation issue.
Yeah, we think, do we think that the state would bring that when they complete their rules and regulations? Don't you think that would be contained within their, with those? They can't throw out late old heroin, or any kind of drugs that they, they give out at the pharmacy. They don't dispose, they have a way of disposing them, it's by state law, I believe. And I'm sure they'd have to do this under the same-
My guess, the state's going to have a lot of regulations on the level of THC in it, they'll be different.
Does the city want to start monitoring that?
I don't know. It's not a bad, you know, I just don't know if that's-
Does the city want to monitor all, you know, we put a lot of conditional use in here. For us to monitor all this is going to put a burden, some burden on us.
Well, yeah, part of it is, if it's too, too, too difficult to administer, meaning enforce, it really means nothing. It's just, and we try to make these as simple, that's easy, you know, black or white.
Well, suppose there's a dumpster on the property. Could we say no dumpster on the property for the disposing of an old product? Or can we say, keep all, you know, waste materials inside until pickup? I don't know.
Well-
We have contain-all activity at the medical marijuana dispensary within the dispensary building.
Building.
Except for onsite parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the question is, putting a dumpster out there for regular-
It's reasonable.
I don't think the state's going to allow them to dump marijuana.
I don't think so, either.
But let's not make it easy for them to do something wrong.
I had a, I had a separate issue that-
Public health, safety, welfare be prohibited, be protected is, but-
That I brought up last meeting, when I said, you know, I want a sausage and mushroom pizza in a nickel bag. We, we talk about, um-
Jesus.
We talk about the drive up, the drive through, drive in, but, um, we don't talk about the retail, the, the delivery of retail products. In other words, you can get on the web and tell Winn-Dixie to bring you your, your bread and milk, and they'll, they or somebody else will deliver it to you.
Well, I don't think, we said that the dispense, the activity has to be on site. I would say that you can't be- I would say that you can't be getting, calling somebody to come by your house.
So we are somewhere prohibiting.
No home delivery of this product.
No home delivery. Okay. That was my concern. And we also talk a lot about the, the odor. You're talking about the odor of unsmoked material?
Well, they're.
The raw material?
They're not gonna be smoking this in there, but there could be some odor involved.
The chief says it's very strong odor.
Yeah.
From the unsmoked material, if you have a lot of it.
There you go.
Like a tobacco shop would be?
I assume it'd be sealed until it's.
Like a tobacco shop.
Until it's dispensed, but.
So.
I don't know.
There's gotta be quality control. Maybe our expert knows if it's sealed or not.
You know, we're supposed to give some guidance to our, our council.
Yeah, I think we're going a little beyond what we can do. I mean, the next thing you do will be, you know, look, going through their books.
And their, and what kind of counters they can use.
Go way beyond what we should be doing.
I think, I think the concern is covered by number four under D, which is be complying at all times with state and local laws and regulations.
That covers a lot.
And, and, you know, laws and regulations are written to deal with these kinds of issues as, as we go forward. And I'm sure there will be, be ones at that time. I'm not sure that we, this, at this stage, we want to be that specific. We're very specific in a lot of areas. But I think that item, that D4 covers us being able to have them comply with all other, any laws or rules, regulations that we think of later, or that the state comes up with.
The state comes up.
Or the county comes up with.
So far, it seems like the board has not made an adjustment of any kind to what you've proposed. I find that in my personal.
Well, one, we.
I'm sorry.
We have, we have weighed one.
The one is the service delivery. I don't know if you're in for your other part. The service delivery, which, you know, we could make it in the morning, between like six and eight, and add the guard has to be, in any service delivery, they have to have an armed guard there. I mean, this may be overkill, but we, you know, at this point in time.
It's protecting the public. It's our job.
Uh huh.
Yeah, I don't think you want to restrict deliveries to a two-hour period. It should be either, deliveries during the operating hours, or two hours before, or something.
Or daylight?
Daylight. It would be a way of doing it, too.
Okay. I mean, whatever. I mean, I don't have any.
During working, you know, during when it's open. So they can make sure there's somebody there, you know, there's guards there, and they just, they deliver during working hours.
Well, just say delivery has to be during working. So we'll put an added condition in there.
Well, all you have to do is change that one thing, say only operate, or get, or accept deliveries between.
Oh, okay.
But seven o'clock in the winter time, it's still dark.
Seven, yeah, seven to eight, I mean, eight to seven.
D5.
Operate or accept deliveries.
Okay.
Okay.
You put a lot of work into this.
I have a couple of other comments. Number one, I know that you don't want to make it too restrictive, but I, having formerly been in the retail business and in the liquor business, can tell you that I think there's a need with a controlled substance that you have inventory controls. And that, and that the inventory be regulated, and that they be, that it be reported. I, as a, I, as a member of the public, would like to see what goes in to that dispensary, and what leaves that dispensary at the end of the month. Have that kind of a report.
That can't be, I don't see.
I'm not saying that that can happen at this point.
Under planning and zoning, um.
I'm not saying that can happen at this point in time.
Department of Health would put a regulation in if they could do that.
If the state doesn't control that, we're out of control.
Yeah.
What I do know is, in Colorado, I happened to have one particular, has their, own and operated dispensary out there. And they are so monitored by the state of Colorado, they have to weigh plants when they pull them, when they, they have to weigh them, when they have to shake and all the, and they have to keep, and there's tracking of every single plant. And it's amazing what they have to go through. I, I couldn't, they were telling me this, and I couldn't, I couldn't even comprehend all the regulations. And I hope that the state of Florida, if, if we're going to have this, does the same due diligence that be regulated. And I don't think the city is the place, that's my opinion. I think we'd be leaving our domain as, as a planning and zoning board to start regulating that kind of control, just like we would at the Walgreens or at the CVS. They have their own rules that are set up by the state or federal to control those things.
That was a general comment relative to.
I'd agree with you, though.
Any controlled substance.
It has to be controlled.
And here's the language from the low THC, which is probably similar to what's gonna happen with this if it passes. The ability, you have to be able to prove and show the ability to maintain accountability of all raw materials, finished products, and any byproducts to prevent diversion, or unlawful access to or possession of these substances. So that's kind of the way the state is aiming in this direction.
And those are in the statutes already.
These are already in statute.
That's why I'm saying, I think the legislature's gonna come in here. There, it's, there's too much going on here for them to just let it go to DOH.
Rich, you had another one, though. You weren't done. Rich isn't done yet. Hold on.
We've gone, we've said a lot about what cannot be done in, in our ordinance. But the state, the state amendment refers to treatment centers as well. And I think that there ought to be something in our ordinance that says, not a treatment center. That this facility will not be used as a treatment center.
That's our definition. If you look at the definition.
Definition. I think he got it.
Dispensary.
I think we ought to make it clear, Mr. Chairman, too, that what was provided to us.
Excludes all those.
Is a petition, and not the ballot language, or even the backup to the ballot language.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You gave us a petition by, by the pro-marijuana folks. It's not the.
Well, it's not the actual ballot, but they had the language of the ballot, and they also had the language of the, the amendment, the constitution.
Okay.
You know, with that.
Yeah, full text of the protest.
Yeah, that's the full text.
Well, there was another section that's on the ballot that wasn't in there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I don't know whether they, you know, all those points below the ballot language made it through. This is simply a petition.
I have the whole constitutional amendment. Maybe I'll pass it down.
Do, do we need to put in our, do we hit, Tim, are you sure we have, it's stated effectively, or Peggy more so, that's, that we're affected, this is not treatment, the treatment is not allowed in the city. We're not doing, doing any treatment here.
And that's what it.
It's, it's specific enough.
Well, it's the cultivation processing are the two of the major things. I mean, if they're delivering it into the city, the transfer, all that is not it. You know, that's something being done.
Okay.
Okay.
But you can't have a treatment facility in the city either.
You can't have one that, under their definition of a treat facility, no.
It's clear enough.
Well, I think it is.
Okay.
Okay, that was all of that. I don't know. Not a legal legal.
I was trying to make it work, you know? I mean, some of the ordinance actually prohibit that. Why I didn't do that, we're trying to get away, our ordinance, it's not, the use is not allowed if it, it's not listed as a use. Everything else prohibited. When you start saying prohibited, then you get into questioning, well, why do you have that? I mean, I thought you said that excludes it, and undermines this when we're in, in any case, you know, a legal situation. Okay?
And I'd just like to make one observation on my, on my last comment. I don't think we need to lose sight of the fact that the county is putting, putting together an ordinance. Okay? And if it's gonna be similar to our ordinance, then we're going to, as a city, be exposed to a lot of delivery centers. Because there are a lot of industrial centers in the county. And so therefore, to both sides of the argument, it's not gonna be the only dispensary within driving distance for patients. The one that we do allow in our, in our city limits. Because just outside the city limits is another industrial park, which may have another dispensary.
Did you get, Peggy, did you get a sense that the county was going in that direction?
I don't know what they're planning on doing, but we're only about 14 square miles. The county is much bigger.
The county's huge. So, I mean, but he's right. There may be other, it depends how the county decides to do it. They may take a totally different approach than we did.
Allow it in a different kind of area.
Yeah.
I would agree. I think the, the point is that the city is very small. Forty percent of it's the airport. The, nobody really knows where the city boundaries are. And so, if people really want to, are concerned about this, they should be looking at the county probably more than they're looking at us. But also, I think it'd be good to recommend to the city council that they work with the county, the staff works with the county to coordinate these things, and make sure that they're compatible.
And we're, we're doing that.
They have a copy of our ordinance, yeah.
Right.
I started contacting Dylan Rheingold as soon as the council suggested that we go in this direction, so.
I think neighboring counties and cities, too. Like you were mentioning even before the meeting, Tim, in Washington DC, you know, with the alcohol regulations and rules, 18 in DC, but 21 in Virginia and Maryland. And your neighbors.
We have to drive into the city.
Yeah.
That was a perk.
That was a perk. I saw it that way.
It was a Friday night thing, you know? So, and, but I think it's important that we, we know what they're doing, too.
If you wish to come to the podium, please come up. You can make an additional comment. I have.
But I'm not, I don't think they won't do what we're doing, but I'd just be interested.
You can make, go right to the podium if you wish to make a comment.
I have, I have a question. If you, where are the treatment facilities gonna be? If you have doctors that are writing a referral for medical marijuana, I know this town has a lot of doctors in it, that's a treatment facility. Are you saying they have to move? If they can't be in the, I'm just, I'm putting this out there.
I just think that, right now, I don't think we want to deal with the treatment facilities.
I don't think we address treatment facilities in here, do we?
Well, we, we negated it a minute ago. I think we negated it, correct? I asked that question.
Yeah, we negated it. But I mean, a doctor writing a.
He's saying, can you treat, can he treat the patient in the city? If he has, in the hospital?
Well, we didn't get into that.
The ordinance doesn't cover that.
We don't cover that.
Okay, I just heard you say, a treatment facility. And you didn't discuss.
Facility or center?
What's that?
Treatment center.
Treatment center.
Because a treatment center by definition is everything from planting the seeds and growing it, and harvesting, and, and the end product of dispensing it.
Okay, I didn't.
That's my definition.
Okay.
And we limited our definition to say dispensary.
Okay. Because when you said treatment center, I'm thinking, but you're being treated there, and that's a doctor.
An overnight facility where someone would stay?
Where the grow operation would be. The processing plant, basically.
I mean, some ordinance would allow that.
I have a question.
Just curious.
No, you're right. I have a question.
Um, I have one more question or concern about this. Given that most doctors are given free prescription pills to give out to their patients by the pharmaceutical companies.
You mean when the drug reps are there?
It's, given this, this ordinance, what the state does, will it be legal if a producer of the.
The product?
Delivers free samples to the doctors to dispense to their, to their customers, you know, to their patients as a, to see if it works, which is what doctors usually do with free prescriptions.
It was suggested to me before this meeting that we ask for samples.
Well, I'm, I'm just raising the question.
Well, I, I think the state's gonna handle some of that.
The state's gonna have to handle.
That's not our rules.
Again, I mean, we cannot cover everything. As I said, we may have to come back, and probably will have to come back and do some other modifications, depending what happens.
The city has no rules in that right now, nor will we ever in the future. I don't think it's our regulation. We don't think we can regulate that. Right. I have one last question from, I think this is my last question. If, if these facilities turn out to be something that's legitimate and positive for our community, okay? And we have restricted ourselves so much here, that they, that the, the county, there may be revenue enhancement from this, matter of fact, a lot of the states and municipalities do this because of the revenue enhancement aspect to it, that we may have, we may have isolated ourselves from any of that positive impact.
Well, I mean, there's two things going on here. First, I don't think there's gonna be any revenue enhancement with medical marijuana. We pointed out pharmaceutical. But as, as, let's say these things move along, they're legitimate, it's working, we can always loosen up the ordinance.
Okay.
And I think the lady pointed out, part of this is a learning experience. Maybe we're not as far along, but that's, you know, people get more comfortable. Just like liquor stores, you see them all over, you know? I'm not saying that'll happen, but in Florida, but you know what I'm saying. It, that's what, the ordinance is not fixed in stone. As we go along and things work out, we can, things can change.
Absolutely. We have drive-through liquor stores, so.
Well, we're.
We have, in North Carolina, they call them brew-throughs.
Brew-throughs, yeah.
Brew-throughs.
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 Additional questions?
I'm fine, thank you.
I'm done. I hope we, hope we offer something that's reasonable. It seems like the ordinance was pretty well drafted for what we know and what you could do at this point. I think there's a lot I don't understand and don't expect to understand at this meeting or subsequent other ones. I don't even know how I'm gonna vote on the issue, to tell you the truth right now. I really don't. It depends how it's defined, and what my peers' pressure they put on me. I, I think we've got pretty much what we, the best we can do today to pass into our city, unless there's additional questions or comments. So, I'm ready to make a motion. And I'm, I'm saying maybe we should make a motion here to.
Sure. I'll move that we accept the staff recommendation for forwarding this proposed ordinance to the city council for their review.
With the amendment.
With the amendment, as amended, as amended.
And I'd like to add just that we work with neighboring.
Okay.
That's good, too. I think that was a good comment, also.
Coordinate, yeah.
Right on. Yeah. Okay. So do we have a second to that?
A second.
Robin seconded. Is this just a regular vote? Roll call?
Roll call.
Ordinance.
Ms. Polansky?
Yes.
Mr. Mutcher?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Cottow?
Yes.
Mr. Lothar?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Planning Department matters is our next issue?
Yeah, the only thing I'll bring up, and I'll be very short on it, is you're all probably aware by now that the, our appeal of the code enforcement case did not go the way that, they, they affirmed the case, but there was no opinion granted at all. So, we, we had some options. We've talked to our attorney about it. We still believe our ordinance is constitutional, all that, but we may have to do some fine tuning. But it's gonna be up to the city council. Susan Travarthen, who's our, our, our legal counsel on this, is coming down to the city council meeting on Tuesday, and gonna brief them on where we stand on it, and what options are available to the council. So I suggest you might want to tune into that, or be here at the meeting, just to see what's going on.
Do you think it'd be appropriate for any comments from members of the planning board to, planning and zoning to make at the city council?
I would, I don't, go ahead.
It is a public.
I'm wondering if it might come back to them in any way, shape, or form.
Uh, well.
That was asking.